Okay, it is 6:30 on May 15th. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel. I'll be presiding at the meeting. Welcome you all here tonight. And would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, the meeting is called to order. We will have roll call. Council members, Councilmember Highland.
Here.
It's good to hear that strong voice again.
It's good to say that, too.
Councilmember Call.
Here.
Councilmember Hattledstedt.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
All councilmembers present. Excuse me. On my left is City Administrator Donabauer. Usually on my right is City Attorney Arnison, but he is unable to be here this evening, recovering from some shoulder surgery. So thoughts are with him for speed of recovery. Before we move any further, I would like to offer an apology to any of those of you that were, that got, were here at the right time, what you thought was the right time last week, or last time this hearing was held. And I wish it wouldn't have happened that way. It just causes a lot more confusion and work for everybody. So my apologies on behalf of the City Council to those of you that attended then and have to come back for this one. So I'm hoping that, you know, your concerns will be heard tonight and we'll move forward from there. Also with us this evening, Police Chief Padilla, welcome. Jason Femright, representing Bolton &amp; Mink, our city engineering firm. Kurt Mink, celebrating a birthday this evening. So happy birthday Kurt.
Happy birthday Kurt.
Kurt, representing the Arlington Enterprise. All right, with that, we'll move on. And welcome to all the rest of you. I know you're here probably for the 2017 street project and whatever other cause you may have. You are very welcome in your attendance. With that, we'll move on to item three, approve the agenda or agenda additions.
I would like to add one item, and that is, under the consent agenda, adding the April 24 special county council meeting minutes.
Okay, any other agenda items? Any changes? Hearing none. Motion is in order to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattledstedt, to approve the agenda with the one addition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried. We'll move on then to the consent agenda, part of the, of the agenda of the meeting. And consists this evening of item A, approval of the May 1st regular meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the May 1st special training tour workshop minutes. Item C, approval of the April 24th special council meeting. Item D, approval of the bills. And item E, approve the dance permit for the Arlington Fire Department. That's for October 14th, 2017, fall block party at the fire hall and parking lot. Motion is in order to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Yashewski, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We will then move on to the public hearing. This evening's public hearing is for the 2017 street and utility improvement project I will recess the regular council meeting and I will call the public hearing to order. I'm going to invite City Engineer Jason Femright to the microphone, or whatever is close, for the presentation on the 2017 project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'll do is kind of go through some of the basics of where we've been, where we're going, and how we're going to get there. And I'll turn it back over to the council and that'll, we'll open that up for your comments and questions at that time. As you know, we've been talking about this project for quite some time. We started all the way back last year with a feasibility report. Moving through that feasibility report, the council authorized us to move forward with the project. We held that improvement hearing. That's the last time that we invited you guys all here. During that time, we had what was called a preliminary assessment roll. Those were the preliminary assessments based on engineering numbers, not actual bid numbers from contractors. That's what we presented at that time. We also held an open house next door. A number of you came in, brought your comments and questions, tried to incorporate what we could into the design. If you have any more questions about that, I'm certainly available to talk about any specifics around your property. As we start this project and all the way through it, we'll have representative contacts out in the field that you can, that can answer your questions. So once we went through the final design, we actually bid the project, opened bids, and awarded the bids to Char Tiling. And we actually held a pre-construction meeting here. Was it last week?
Last week.
Yep, the end of last week. And just received their schedule today. That's the reason why I thought I just had the meeting. So I got their schedule, and it's looking like construction will probably start about the week of Memorial Day. We'll start with some potential removals, milling the surfaces, and start the construction on it. We have about a three to three and a half month construction window. There's going to be various forms of communication that are going to come out through that window. We're going to have a representative on the project at all times on behalf of the city that's with our office that'll be your point of contact if you have questions. They can help be the liaison between the city and property owners and the contractor, and keep you abreast of what's going on and any questions that you have. So we're going to have, some newsletters are going to come out. We're going to have ability that you can sign up for text message updates about the project, if that's something you wanted. And then there's also going to be a website dedicated to this project that's going to be linked through the city's website. So as we progress through construction this summer, you should have a myriad of forms to be able to get communication. And if you're not understanding it, or still have questions, again, there's going to be contacts that you can get ahold of that can help answer your questions and things like that. So we're hoping for a nice dry season, but who knows? But that's kind of the tentative schedule. So what we have here tonight is the actual assessment hearing. There's final assessment rolls here. I think everybody has had those. That's what's, we're here for that discussion. So if there's any questions, comments, what I'm going to do is turn it back over to the mayor, and you can address them, and they'll answer, and they can throw it over to me if I want to answer it. So with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Jason. We will open it up to statements from the public now, and this is regarding the 2017 street and utility improvement project. And we would ask that if you, when you're ready to speak, you would come to the table and use the microphone, state your name, and state the address that you reside at. So is there anyone that wishes to speak at this time on the project?
Tom Kluber, 201, Fourth Avenue Northwest. And mine is on the alley behind the church, which...
How could you really speak up for him?
Mine's about the alley for the Methodist church and the funding for that. As living in the area and already being told what my amount is to pay for the repairs and the church is assessed for theirs, if you're going to take that assessment out and pay 25% for them, I feel I'm paying for it now in the project, and you're going to tax me for it again next year to pay for that alley repair. Is that right?
I don't personally understand the question. Jason, is there any way you can jump in and clarify?
I think you're just kind of trying to understand the assessment philosophy on the alley, right? Versus 100% versus 25% is what you're kind of referring to?
Yes, the other meeting you had, you took it from 100% to the church, to 25% to the church. Where'd the other 75% go?
That'll be spread above all, around all the taxpayers in the city.
Okay, but it's in this project right now, right?
It is an alternate to the project, so...
But it's in your total budget, right? And we're assessed on the total budget, right?
No, it is not. It is separate. The street improvements, the assessments for sanitary sewer, water, Main Street are completely separate from the alley. That's not being assessed to you guys. It would be, anything that you would potentially see would be that city's portion of that, that all of the taxpayers, but nothing directly on this roll impacts you, your property specifically regarding the alley at all.
Okay. I guess I look at it, it does affect me, because if you take it off the church's bill, you're putting it on my taxes to pay for it.
We're putting it on everyone in the city.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
And it's, the church is problem, right? Not my problem as a taxpayer for the city. So in essence, you are billing me twice. Because they could pick up their own bill, and I wouldn't have to.
But it was reversed?
Yeah. If it went the other way, would they want to pay it? Say you do the alley behind my house, would they want to pay it for it? Or we can do it again. Do the alley behind my house. Will you pick up 75% of that bill for everybody?
Okay, well, that's, discussion that the council will have a little later in the meeting, but I see...
No, that's my point.
Okay.
Because there's only one garage being used off that alley. And there's my alley, there must be at least five. Because one guy's got three style garage, and there's other ones.
Okay.
And I just don't see it's fair to the rest of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Saski, and I'm at 304 West Alden. And my concern is, I went to the open house, I took the night off, I went to the open house, and I had a concern about the nine-ton road. I understand, I don't think that my concerns went any further than that night. Because I came and I've been talking to people, and you've never heard my concerns. So my concern is, is why do you want a nine-ton road? Because I understand this nine-ton road is from Highway 5, three blocks. So I was just wondering why you needed a nine-ton road. I heard rumors you need it for the fire department. That's not true. I heard rumors you need it for some stone. That's not true, because they're leaving. I heard it because of school buses. But they're way under the nine-ton road, or restrictions, so it can't be for school buses. I heard it for semis, the grocery store. They would never use Alden Street because they use Main Street because of, when they back up to their dock, it would be blindsided if they went down Alden Street. That's why they choose to go down Main Street. So it's of no, no value for them. If you did need it for the school buses, then you need to do it through the whole city, not just three blocks. Right now, you know, you got, once the school's done, you're going to need, you know, where all your, the semis will be coming for the groceries or the food, that might be worth the nine-ton. But the three blocks where I'm at, I don't understand. And I brought that concern to the open house, and I don't think it went any further. So I was wondering what happened, why, why I didn't get any concern. So now I'm assessed for a nine-ton road, and I don't know why I didn't get my concern answered. So my concern today still is, is why do we need a nine-ton road? I don't, I don't understand at all why we need a nine-ton road. And I was just here tonight to see if I could get some answers.
Okay, so that also will be part of decisions that we make later on in the meeting. Jason, maybe one question I have is the nine-ton road for those three blocks, is that, is, is the cost of that extra going from a seven to nine-ton road, that is all accessible to the property owners along that three blocks?
It is not.
It is not?
The city, we pulled that out as an oversizing of that street, and that's been 100% city. That is not being assessed directly to the property owners.
Okay, so there's one concern of yours.
So your assessment does not include anything to do with the conversion from seven to nine?
So why are we doing seven-ton, can I ask?
That's the city standard design for street.
I thought it was five.
We've been building in them all to seven. It's the same street that we built in '15, it's the same street that we built on Shamrock and Marion.
They're all seven-ton, though?
There are enough to be a seven-ton, but the...
They're not, or they are?
They are.
They are seven-ton?
Yes.
Okay. I heard they were five, that's why I'm asking.
A five is a typical, we have a little factor of safety that we put in our standard, standard street design. It kind of bumps it right close to a seven-ton, so we're calling them seven-ton roads. We did the gravel equivalent, see if that's what it indeed is. But that provides a good, solid road for the city of Arlington that's going to handle the type of traffic when we're talking about garbage trucks and some of those typical things.
I was going to say, your garbage truck in the city of Arlington, your garbage truck is your nice worst nightmare.
It is. And that's why we look slightly above the five-ton. We could build it to a five-ton, maybe see some more degradation of it. So we went to that standard kind of seven-ton street section, which I think has proven to be a really good road.
Okay, so that's what we'll be doing from now on, seven-ton?
Seven-ton in these areas. This one has nine-ton, is what the designation has been called out, if it remains a truck road. But again, the council's going to talk about that as a topic on each agenda tonight.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the road project? Yeah, he does look familiar.
Galen Wells, 302 Fourth Avenue Northwest. This last question that came up about going from nine-ton down to seven. What is the price difference from one to the other? I couldn't find it in the book, if there is something.
Thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight thousand? Could that money be maybe used someplace better than a nine-ton street? Because again, we're going to have to do some work on the east side of the school eventually. That'd be a good spot to maybe spend thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Good point.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the council? Has there been any written?
No, there have not.
Comments? No written comments have been received? Okay, one more time. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. I will then close the public hearing and reopen the regular City Council meeting at And we will move on in the agenda. At this point, I'm going to call on anyone that wants to address the council for any other reason other than the hearing. This one looks familiar, too.
I've seen him before.
Good evening, again. Galen Wells, 302 Fourth Avenue Northwest. Just a comment here. Two weeks ago, I presented a petition, which was accepted by the mayor, that contained 420 signatures requesting the City Council maintain its own city police department and full-time police chief. I didn't see anything on the agenda for tonight, and I'm just wondering if this petition will be addressed at the next council meeting, or in the very near future, or if it's just going to be thrown to the side and no action taken.
Did you want to speak to our legal counsel, or what? I get, you know, we obviously recognize the fact that we received the petition at the last meeting. One of our first considerations is what, what our reaction, or what are we by our charter required to do? And unless the petition is calling for the abolishment of an ordinance, or the overturning of a resolution, there is no action necessary. I'm sure it'll become part of discussion going forward, the fact that, you know, we obviously cannot ignore the opinions of 420 people. And as we pursue, or continue to look into options for our police department, that, you know, that petition will become part of the discussion. But beyond that, we are not required to take any action. Okay?
Answer's my question, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the council?
Tim Cooby, 502 Highland Circle, Arlington, Minnesota. Been over a month now where I raise a question about the use of Meadow Lake Lane for heavy trucks and very heavy equipment for a street. As I went through Arlington the other day, all streets running north and south are no truck traffic. Meadow Lake Lane goes, starting from first, second, third, are no truck traffic, as we all run north and south. Even the road going out to Highway 12 is a no-truck track. That's a very much-used road. I have been informed that by the committee, you're not going to do a thing about it, the traffic on Meadow Lake Lane. Now, I've heard it's safety reasons, but as those trucks enter the highway going west, north, or east, they don't use Meadow Lake Lane. Meadow Lake Lane is a convenience. It has nothing to do with safety. And that's why they use it. Is it right? No, it isn't right. They have their own driveways used. They should start using them. That's all I got to say.
Anyone else wish to speak to the council? No, we're going to move along to announcements.
Coffee with the mayor will be held this week, this Friday, at Good Sam's at 2:00 P.M. Good Sam's is celebrating National Nursing Home Week, so our mayor will be there to hold a coffee session. That's an exchange of conversation, so everybody is invited for a free cup of coffee and some conversation. Our Cancer Cruise 5K Fun Run and Walk, as well as the Car Show and Cruise, will be held on May 21st, 8:30 to 4:00, activities starting at Four Seasons Park. Our Citywide Cleanup Day is Wednesday, May 24th, 9:00 to 4:00 P.M. in partnership with Tri County Waste at Sibley County Fairgrounds. We posted some information regarding that event in the Arlington Enterprise. The Arlington Farmers Market will begin June 12th and last through September 25th, 4:00 to 6:30 P.M., right here at the Arlington Community Center.
Okay, thank you. Move on to communications.
In the council packet tonight, you do have a copy of the April Police Report, as well as the April Financial Report, and the May Sibley County Community Development Newsletter, which was submitted by Amy Newsom of Sibley County. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions in regard to the communications you've received? Okay. Then we will move on to the report of the boards and committees, annual report of the Planning and Zoning Committee.
That would be me.
I was, I was nominated by our, by our committee this year to give the annual report. The following members are on our commission this year, Jim Kraft, Jim Carlson, Janet Dino, Dwight Grabitzky, Darnell Helverson, and Bob Pickelman, and myself. We'd like to make a point of thanking Mr. Polly for his service and leadership. Mark's term expired in December. We have Jim Kraft as our chair, Dwight Grabitzky as our vice chair, and Janet Dino as our secretary. We met 16 times from January to present. We, our purpose of the planning commission is, our role is to advise the mayor and the council on issues related to land use and property subdivision. The planning commission functions in three distinct capacities. The planning capacity, which the commission assists the city in establishing a vision for the community and steps necessary to reach that vision. A legislative capacity, which the commission studies regulations and proposes changes as needed to attain a vision in a, in our comprehensive community plan. Regulatory capacity, the commission applies ordinances and rules to specific situations in fulfillment of the vision. We have had land use and subdivision applications that were processed in April. We considered a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning of a property at the easternmost end of Main Street. That was Tim Hogg Miller in the city of Arlington. And again, in April, we had a site planned for expansion of the Sibley School. May was a busy month. Another variance was request for 500 Main Street East. In June, we had another variance request that we acted on, Chandler Street pertaining to side yard setbacks. And we recommended that the council deny that variance. So we've had a lot of yays and nays when it comes to our committee. Touching on a few other things, in September, we held a public hearing to consider updating the future land use map, rezoning certain property adjacent to Circle Drive to enable the relocation of some stone. In December, we considered a conditional use permit pertaining to renewal of an expired CUP for transloading of liquid gases. As of lately, we've had some ordinances and amendments to our ordinances. In June, we allowed accessory solar energy systems in the city of Arlington. In July, we had an ordinance opting out of a 2016 state law requiring drop houses to be allowed in town. In December, we amended the solar energy system to allow the ground mounting, before we had it just on the building mounting. So we did that in the Public Institutional District. So as our planning goals that we've been working on is, is to administer the comprehensive plan, as zoning requests and opportunities arise. And as directed in assist in reviewing existing orderly annexation agreement with Arlington Legislative function that we have, we update the zoning and subdivision ordinances, as so to maintain consistency with the 2014 comprehensive plan. We consider strategies to address rental properties in the city as a means of preparing for potential rentals. Review potential to allow accessory dwelling units. Consider rezoning property to R2 multiple families as a means of preparing for potential student rentals. So that is kind of the gist of us for this last year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Councilmember Batchor? Any questions of council member Batchery? Okay, thanks again. And we will now move on to ordinances. First reading of ordinance three thirteen, we do not have anything for tonight, or do we?
Yep, we, no, we, we have it as reserved as we continue through our codification process.
Okay. So then hopefully next month, or next meeting, we'll have some additional items under that ordinance. Item B, first reading of ordinance three fourteen.
So before you tonight is first reading, the reading of ordinance three fourteen, which is an ordinance rezoning a portion of the public cemetery from R one, one and two family residence district to P I, Public Institutional District. A portion of the public cemetery is zoned as R one residential, as opposed to R P I, Public Institutional. So our Planning and Zoning Committee held a public hearing on this issue on May fourth. And the majority of the cemetery was re-zoned previously, with the exception of the lots abutting the access road adjacent to Fifth Avenue Southeast, the area that is marked in, or highlighted in yellow. And so therefore, there is an ordinance included in your packet for, to be considered as a first reading tonight. There was one resident that was at that public hearing that just had some questions about how the columbarium would impact the trees along the south property line on that entrance. They have been informed that, that columbarium would not be affecting the trees along that south property line. And, and that is it?
To add to that, it was the aerial photo, I think, that threw them off, where you can see, it looks like trees within the park. That's actually just the shadows of trees in that area.
I'm going to guess that this was not rezoned correctly ever since that new entrance to the cemetery was put in, because it, it is just where that new entrance is. So it's just, the rezoning is to just clean that up a little bit and make it part of the cemetery. Okay, any questions on the first reading? Hearing none, that will be considered then, the first reading of ordinance three fourteen. Move on to item ten, resolutions.
In your packet tonight is a resolution thirty-nine dash twenty seventeen, calling for a hearing on assessments for the Circle Drive Street Utility Improvement Project, just following along the schedule that's been provided by our city engineer. The council did authorize plans and specifications and authorized advertising for bids for that project. The bid opening was held last week, and now the next form of action is to order advertisement of an assessment hearing. And that assessment hearing would be advertised in the Arlington Enterprise and held on June fifth.
Okay, council, any questions on that? Would someone care to introduce a resolution?
They moved to adopt resolution thirty-nine twenty seventeen, a resolution calling for the hearing on assessments for Circle Drive Street and utility improvements.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Highland introduced the resolution thirty-nine dash twenty seventeen. So it was seconded by councilmember Hattlestead. And that is a resolution calling for a hearing on assessments for the Circle Drive Street and utility improvement projects, improvement project. Is there any further questions, comments? If not, a vote by roll call vote. Councilmember Batchery?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted.
You're kind of throwing me off a little bit, Mr. Mayor.
Why is that?
I'm not used to being called in the first. Usually, I'm one of the last ones.
Oh.
So I'll try and be attentive.
We're catching up for lost time here. Get you back in the groove in a hurry.
Oh, boy.
All right, item B, under resolutions.
The council is being asked to accept two generous donations tonight. The first being under resolution forty dash twenty seventeen, to accept or deny a twenty-five dollar donation from the American Legion for the Second Annual Arlington Night Out Event, which will be held Tuesday, August first.
I'll move that we accept our approved resolution forty twenty seventeen to accept the twenty-five dollar donation, American Legion, for the Second Annual Arlington Night Out.
Second.
Okay, the resolution was introduced by councilmember Yashewski, seconded by councilmember Batchery, and that is resolution forty dash twenty seventeen. A resolution accepting the donation, designating its use. And that is from the Arlington American Legion for the annual Arlington Night Out. Any questions, discussion? If not, vote by roll call vote. Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchery?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. Item C.
The second donation can be found under resolution forty-one dash twenty seventeen, to accept or deny a three hundred dollar donation from the Muffert family to be designated toward the purchase of the two thousand seventeen fire brush rig.
Like to make motion to accept three hundred dollar donation from the Muffert family for the fire rig, fire brush rig?
Second.
Resolution has been introduced by councilmember Batchery, seconded by councilmember Cowell. Resolution forty-one dash twenty seventeen, accepting the donation and designating its use, that being from Gerald and Melbum Muffert for the two thousand seventeen fire brush rig. Any discussion? If not, vote by roll call. Councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchery?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. Item D.
A draft of language is put before you tonight, an amendment to the special assessment policy in reference to whether the city council would, under its sole discretion, issue a refund to affected property owners within improvement project area. The, as mentioned before, this is not something that other cities have addressed in their policy, so this is new language. It has been reviewed by city attorney Anderson, who was unable to come tonight. He did approve it by two form. The council asked or referenced that maybe possibly a threshold of a percentage would be used. So that is left in here. So I guess I open it up for discussion, but that draft language is included as page eight of the special assessment policy.
And this last one, it was, was the total project was like one point seven something?
I have to pull that info.
Roughly.
Total project cost was one point nine three four million.
Okay, that was for the two thousand fifteen or so?
Correct.
Okay. So we were, I mean, under two percent, was it, last time?
Well, in language here, I see that it, it states either whether we come below or above a certain percentage threshold than two. So I'm wondering, very curious on that as well. It's, it's, if we come below budget or go above budget, the same percent, which the percent is
So.
empty right now.
So actually, the percentage, it means the overall project has to come in under budget and then using a percentage of either at or above. So I, I guess that isn't clear as you read it out loud.
Right.
Yeah, does the word, or?
Yeah, it, it to me.
It makes it confusing.
It looked to me that it was either if we were over budget, that we would then assess as well.
Not the intent of the language.
No, no.
That, that's what I read it as.
Because if we go over budget, we cannot go and reassess. I mean, it's locked in and all taxpayers are.
So what we're saying here is that whatever that percentage is in there, it's gonna have to meet that percentage or more before there is a refund considered.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Whatever that number is, one point five, two, two point five, or whatever. If it's underneath, if we say two and a half percent and it comes in at two, there is no refund. That's what this is saying, correct?
Correct.
Does that also give us, or the council, the discretion?
So in.
As well, right?
So in the amendment, it does say the city may issue a refund in its sole discretion. But also, at the beginning of the fourteen-page document, it does also state that the assessment policy is just simply a guide. So, and it gives you room to make changes to your practices and procedures. This is just simply a guide.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we deny the amendment on resolution forty-two two seventeen. On page eight, item number fourteen.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, in regard to resolution forty-two dash twenty seventeen, motion is being introduced by councilmember Highland to deny the amendment for the special election policy that was before you. And that motion was seconded by councilmember Batchery. Is there any discussion, any further discussion?
The reason for my wanting that to be removed is in the past, through this whole process, we've had our city engineer, our financial advisors, some legal people. Administrator Donabauer has checked with other cities and took the best of the information we got back. Other cities do not do the refunds. So based on the expertise that have recommended it, that's my reason for the motion.
Okay. Any other comments? Again, the motion is to deny the inclusion of the, of the item fourteen under refunds in the policy. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no?
No.
Four in favor, one opposed, the motion passes. Okay, item E.
All right, in your packet is an amendment to the financial management plan. The auditors were out for their two thousand sixteen audit, just less than a month ago, and made reference to a fairly new statute pertaining to the competitive bidding process. Contracts generally go to the lowest responsible bidder, and that's what the statute is in reference to. And according to the law, the lowest responsible bidder does not necessarily mean the lowest bidder, but the lowest bidder who is most likely to do faithful conscientious work and promptly fulfill the contract. So in order to award a bid to a lowest responsible bidder, the solicitation must call out for certain criteria that must be met for the contractor to submit a bid. So with that discussion with our auditor and through our research staff, felt that it was relevant to include an amendment to the financial management plan. So you'll see on page seventeen of the purchasing policy, there's language within there just describing the lowest, lowest responsible bidder criteria.
Okay. So this is coming as a recommendation from our auditor then?
Correct.
Would this apply as well to property that we sell? Or is this construction only?
This is for...
I mean, it says purchases exceeding a hundred thousand, so I'd imagine that it's nothing that we would be selling outright.
It'd be for purchases.
Purchases.
So whether it's equipment or it is a project.
That was over a certain dollar or something?
Correct.
Hundred thousand.
Over a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand. Any other questions? Would someone wish to introduce them, resolution?
I'll introduce resolution forty-three dash two oh one seven, to approve the amendment to the financial management plan.
Second.
Second? Motion, or the resolution, I should say, was introduced by councilmember Hattlestead, seconded by councilmember Cowell. And that is resolution forty-two dash twenty seventeen, a resolution authorizing and approving an amendment to the special, excuse me, special assessment policy. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call vote. Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchery?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
And councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. There is no unfinished business at this time, we'll move on to new business. Item eleven, twenty seventeen, Street and Utility Improvement Project.
So under item A, the decision on the truck route on West Alden is before you tonight, the nine-ton versus the seven-ton road. You'd heard feedback tonight regarding that. I do have a copy right on the screen. The city has designated truck routes, and so you can, all highlighted in green, that Alden Street is included as a nine-ton road. But our streets committee did meet on Wednesday to briefly discuss the topic. And I know that city engineer Femright had said this was an option for the, the council to consider. We, it was bid out that way, but at, I think you had made it pretty clear that at any point, the city council could change their mind. And the contractor is actually waiting to hear this council's decision on whether to move forward with the nine-ton versus the seven-ton road. So I'll open up for discussion and formal action.
What would the city lose if we kept that at a seven-ton instead of a nine-ton? I know that I had someone watch that street the last three days, and there was, I believe, three trucks that used it only.
Semi-trailer.
Correct. So, and when they have other routes that they can use, I'm trying to find out, figure out the benefit to making that a nine-ton road. I mean, if there is, great, but what are we gonna lose if we make it seven-ton? Would be my first question, and then the second question is, and maybe Jason, you can answer this. If we went with, because Semstone's not there anymore. If we went with a seven-ton road in this project, and we don't know what will happen to that Semstone property. Let's say that a business comes in and they would need West Alden as a truck road. Would it be possible then to change that to a nine-ton? Or is that not possible, and what would the cost be?
It would be possible. We would be talking about putting a bituminous overlay on it, just like a street that's getting, reaching the end of its useful life on the surface. Put that overlay on it, beef up the strength of that road. So, you know, we would be removing the nine-ton to a seven-ton here, and we want to move back to a nine-ton in the future. We simply mill the edges and put on an overlay. And the cost of that is the cost of the tunis at that time, which would be very, you know. Right now, bituminous is really cheap. That is the one thing, based on the bid numbers, it's about as cheap as we're gonna see bituminous. I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball, but it is extremely low. In the future, more than likely, it would be inflation, so that would be your response.
That's our five years' dollars, gonna cost more money.
It's gonna cost you more in the future.
If we needed to do it.
If you need it.
But we don't need, we don't know that.
I think last time when Jordan was here, we talked about this, and he even mentioned, because we talked about the Jerry's trucks going there, he mentioned that they take by the school there, the other way.
Second Avenue.
Second Avenue instead, and they don't even use it.
Trying to figure out what it would hurt if we just kept that seven-ton. And save the money. As Galen said, use it somewhere else. Or don't, it doesn't mean we have to spend it. But I'm just figuring out the benefit to making it nine-ton. Right now, there, I don't see a benefit.
So Jake said, right now, on the bid, it's figured, seven-ton road.
Correct.
Nine.
That's considered, bid at nine. That's considered, bid at nine.
Yep, I would just remove that amount of bituminous that goes from a seven-ton to a nine-ton. We would issue a change order, just removing that amount and updating the plan, um, the thickness of the bituminous. That's the level of effort. And they, until they install it, realistically, until they start prepping subgrade, you know, we have some flexibility, but it's, it's easy to remove, if that's your choice.
And that is considered a truck route now, though, correct?
Correct, according to city resolution, uh, yes, it's included. As all areas in green.
So would we have to remove that designation if we decided to go down to a seven-ton road?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Well, we'd have to take the truck route sign down, because it's listed now as a truck road. And where I go to seven-ton, well, of course, it can't be listed as a truck road. I wouldn't think.
I consulted the city engineer femerite to ask if it, if it, as current as it's constructed, is it constructed as a nine-ton road? And we, we don't know the answer to that.
We don't know, it's been acting as a nine-ton road. Obviously, the wear and tear on all the streets is less than what we've seen on the adjacent streets, so, you know, it's been functioning. You know, for the ton of truck traffic that's been on there, whatever the pavement thickness is out there, we did not do any borings on it to verify what it is, but it's been functioning as a truck road. So if we were to rebuild it, we'd build it as a nine-ton if we wanted to be a truck road.
And if we don't have it at nine-ton, go to seven-ton, we lose the truck route designation?
I would recommend removing it, so otherwise, they're gonna be driving legally on a seven-ton road and maybe do some.
Then we could possibly have some damage.
Then you can see some damage, and then, you know, you're gonna, not building it based on what I would recommend for a, for a truck road. Now, say it couldn't function, you know, we build good roads here, but, um, to meet the actual designation of a nine-ton, the gravel equivalency would require more bituminous.
Those trucks that you saw, or somebody reported to you traveling, were those over nine-ton or qualified?
They were, they were truck road trucks.
Truck road trucks. So only three in how long?
Three, Thursday through about noon today. That's not counting Saturday or Sunday.
So Thursday, Friday, Monday.
Half up to noon.
Two and a half days, three trucks.
Yeah, not a lot of traffic.
No.
So then where would the recommended truck route be, if we did?
Well, any of the areas Highland in green are designated as truck routes. So there's Main Street. There is, um, Highway five, nine.
Five to Main Street.
Coming by hotel.
Either way.
Yeah, they still have access.
Right.
This may not be relevant to what we're talking about, but I think the streets committee maybe should be looking and keeping an eye on Second Avenue all the way up to Highway five as a way of, you know, maybe designating that eventually as a truck road. Just makes sense for any trucks coming in from the north or leading to the north. That's a discussion for a different day. We should do it now.
No.
You are eager, aren't you?
We're gonna put me back in the hospital.
No, no, no. Okay, any other discussion regarding seven-ton versus nine-ton? Hearing none, I would call for a motion to take action on that question.
I would make a motion that we reduce that to seven-ton, and if needed, take down the truck road sign.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Haddelstead, seconded by Councilmember Yashewski, to, um, make the change in the twenty seventeen Street and Utility Improvement Project on Alden Street to, uh, designate that as a seven-ton road versus what it now is as a nine-ton road.
Do we have to make, uh, this, uh, change something as far as truck routes then? Is that a different motion, is that a different?
I can bring that back, it'd be in the form of a resolution amending the current truck road designations.
If you could do that, that would be great.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion is carried unanimously. All right. We then also, on the ste, same project, need to, uh, take action regarding the special assessment policy, I believe?
On April twenty-fourth, at the special council meeting, the council did approve an amendment to the special appr, assessment policy, which allows, again, in the sole discretion of the city council, upon finding that an alleyway primarily benefits the general public and not adjoining property owners, the cost of either a reconstruction or an upgrading of the alleyway shall be assessed at twenty-five percent to all lots abutting on the alley. This is an amendment to, um, section ten point five for alleys, which does state that any upgrading of existing alleys is assessed at a hundred percent to all lots abutting on the alley in the block being approved. So tonight, the council is being tasked to determine whether the amendment to the special assessment policy does apply to alternate number one, the drainage improve, drainage improvements to the alleyway, uh, north of Alden Street. Turn it over, council for discussion.
I wasn't, I guess, part of the council when it got added as an alternate, so I guess I'm curious as to, why it was added, or who initiated that? Was it the city, was it the church, was it?
So, it was based on verbal complaints regarding the drainage from members of the Methodist Church. So it was just simply added as an alternate to provide a price to indicate whether, or to sh, give it an option as to whether the Methodist Church wanted to move forward with the improvement. So, it's not a part of the project's scope, but could be removed or added as an alternate.
I did a little survey, as everybody could see, of the amount of traffic in that alley from vehicles in the morning, during school, lunch hours, after school. I think on the handout I gave, everybody could see the amount of traffic. It's not a lot. And I'm really hung up on this because if, if I saw that there was a benefit to the city or the school, I would probably be really willing to consider this. But when you look at the traffic that's there now, and I sat there just about thirty-one hours, two, three hours a day, counting cars, counting people walking through the alleys, and I talked to Superintendent Amston, and I wanted to know what their plans were for next year with the new school in regards to the west entrance that's now used. That entrance, according to Mr. Amston, will be a locked entrance. It will be for teachers and/or visitors to the business office only. There will be no students coming through that door. They will all be coming into school from the north axis. So, someone could debate that my numbers were a little off, I don't know that it matters. If it were, I don't believe they are. Because whatever numbers are there, next year, they're not going to be there. And then, to do that, I mean, we can change everything and say, well, it's a reconstruction, but to be a reconstruction, it has to have a bituminous. And it does not, it's a gravel alley. So I don't know how we can change all this. And then, I don't, I'm not sure why we're even going to asphalt it, because who's, the church would benefit, no FNs or butts about it. But there's, what benefit is there to the community? Nobody uses it. Very few people use it. There's no benefit to the school, because that's going to be a locked access. So I, I, I'm just not sure why we should reduce those fees, because I just don't see a benefit to anybody other than the church. But now, we're gonna take that and have all the taxpayers in town cover that expense. I know I was at one school board meeting, and that question brought up, got brought up, and one of the school board members had stated that if we were to purchase that lot, we do not need a asphalt alley. So if they don't need the alley, and I can't see any benefit to the community, I can't see any benefit to the school, because they won't enter there anymore. There'll be some teachers entering there, probably some people in the business side, but there's no students. And ninety percent of that traffic now is students, there are some teachers. Most of them walk around the side of the school, as I watched them instead of down the alley, because most of them that were using that area were women, and I imagine they don't want to walk through the gravel alley and get their shoes wet. So, I.
In response to the, uh, the bituminous surfacing, I think the reason why, my understanding is when you're putting a drain in, in other words, a storm sewer drain, in the middle of, middle of the alley, it's pretty hard to have it remain gravel, because you're gonna get a bunch of gravel going down the storm sewer.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
So.
But, like I said, there, who, there's no benefit, I don't, I, I can't find a benefit to the community. Because the school kids are using it, some teachers are using it, and I imagine some church people are using it. There are quite a few people that pull in off the, the west street, and they'll come into that alley and turn immediately into the parking lot. But if that turned to grass, they can just come in the other entrance. They're not cutting anybody off by, say, grassing that alley. Nobody's losing access to anything.
So are you suggesting that, suggesting that we abandon the alley?
Well, I don't know, I'm assuming the church's stance is that if it's gonna be asphalt, that it's gonna have to be at twenty-five percent. I'm trying to figure out why we couldn't cede in from the west street somewhere down, I mean, we'd have to address Mr. Revere's driveway to his garage. But why do we need to do all that added work? I just can't come up with a good reason to charge the taxpayers for that.
Sometimes the only answer to that is because.
That, but because don't work with me.
So the one thing we really don't know is what the school's gonna use, because the sporting events are gonna be all over here, so there will be some more for that. Um, so that's, you know, it's all unknown, we, we have no idea, and I always-
If they use that parking lot added, then what is it, fifteen cars?
Yeah.
And they can still walk across the street, the paved alley, they can do all that without that paved alley.
And I guess what I'm saying is, if we wait.
Parking on the south.
On the south side of the school also, correct?
You know, when they tear the building down, that'll-
There's gonna be parking there. So, yeah, even if, even if they did go with that parking lot, whether it's fifteen cars, eighteen cars, twenty-one cars, you walk right across the street, you don't, you could access it without the alley.
I guess what I was saying is, if we wait and see how the use is, if, I mean, if, Jason, if we wait and do this project after the school is done, and see the traffic, or don't do it at all, I'm just saying.
There isn't, just, the traffic is, I was gonna put trail cameras out there, instead of sitting there thirty-one hours.
I believe, I believe you, but-
But I didn't want to do that, because I didn't want my trail camera stolen. So, you know, and whatever traffic was there now, whether it be ten, twenty, eighty, hundred, it's students and teachers. Next year, there'll be some teachers, there'll be no students. That's coming from the school, there will be. So, we're gonna pay him an alley at the taxpayer's expense for what? Not for the school. Council, they lock the community going up and down the alley.
Councilmember Cowell, did you want the floor?
I was just wondering if we waited on the, if we did the project in the future, not saying we will, but if we do, would it be the same cost, or are we getting a discount because it's included in the project, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, uh, if we were to not do this, and we wanted to do it two years from now, separate from the street project, it's gonna cost you more than what we did here. Even if you tied to the street project, it's not gonna be right here, right now, they're working in this area. So, if we have any inkling that we would want to do that, the only thing I would say is that we should stub out the storm sewer to that alley, so we don't have to dig up the street. At least doing that, you, you know, if we're gonna think about maybe doing it in the future, at least doing that. I, I don't want to go and dig up that street to put in the storm sewer, not that we couldn't.
Right.
But, I mean, that would be a consideration that we should think about if we were to want to hold off on it and wait and see.
You just put a ten-foot stub in and put a cap on it?
Yeah, I mean, the, the manhole is across the street, so, I mean, you're putting in fifty feet of twelve-inch storm sewer just to get
Just.
to the alley, you know, outside of the street.
Okay.
That's a commitment right there, fifty feet of twelve-inch storm sewer, just to get it to that point. Just in case we would want to maybe do it in the future, we should look hard at that.
We've all talked about, or we've talked about upgrading this alleyway, how about just a reconstruction of the alleyway? I mean, it is in dire need of something. And I guess, looking at the upgrade, that was gonna be, you know, upgraded, right? The best, the best of the best. Just reconditioning the road or reconstructing the road, I, or the alley is, I think, what it needs. And then, along with you, if we need something more in the future, then that would be something more in the future. But I think that we should definitely at least, you know, address it and reconstruct it. But I, I don't feel that the upgrade is needed, I don't see the traffic there. I know a lot of people walk there, and I know those, uh, potholes filled with water and freeze, and people fall, and it's quite, you know, um, quite something in the wintertime, but, um, that entrance to the north side is gonna be all students, and for activities, that north side, for the most part, that's where people are gonna be coming in. There are gonna be, um, things happening on the no, on the south side as well, in the new auditorium, hopefully, we'll have a lot of people in there, but, um, for the most part, it's gonna be that north entrance that's gonna be used, utilized, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask, Jason? Your freshman memory, what would the cost be to upgrade that alley with the storm sewer in, and block top it? Roughly?
Forty-six, forty-four. That was thirty-four thousand. Is the, is the, what it currently is, that's the storm sewer, that's, uh, adding the bituminous surface is thirty-four thousand-ish.
And at this point, twenty-five percent of that assessment was divided up amongst the property owners?
No, no, it wasn't. When we, when we, um, or when this exception was adopted, there was no discussion specifically about the Methodist situation. It was just a change in this part of the section of our policy. So that was never addressed. However, I think it was assumed, but it was not addressed.
But yes, the twenty-five percent, if the amendment applied, the twenty-five percent would apply to all property owners adjacent to the alley, or any alley if, as this amendment would be applied to any alley.
So it'd be about four residents and the church is?
Two residents.
Two residents.
Two residents, and the rest is church property.
Okay. And how was that proposed, the twenty-five percent to be divided up?
Well, each of the, oh boy, trying to just, Jason, do you have that there, how that works?
That's what cost it, the twenty-five percent is about eighty-five hundred dollars, and they're split up, about a thousand-dollar assessments, because they're almost, most of them are seventy-five-foot lots, one is a fifty-foot lot. So it's about one thousand seventy-three dollars for a seventy-five-foot lot is the twenty-five percent assessment. Previous assessment rule that we had, it's not exact, but, uh, the same seventy-five foot, if it was a hundred percent, would be around four thousand dollars, forty-one hundred.
Per lot?
Per lot, per seventy-five foot of, yeah, per lot, yep.
And a reconstruction would consist of just re-graveling?
Reconstruction would be improving what's already there, but not-
But it would still be gravel?
I mean, not improving, but gravel, yeah. But no drain.
And do we have any record the last time we did that?
Did, why, I'm sorry?
Any, any kind of graveling?
Any improvement on the alley?
Well, not really a reconstruction, but I think every year, they grade the alleys, right? The city does. So, but I think it's at a point, or whatever, where it needs more than maybe just grading. So that's where the reconstruction would come in. The same material that's used there now. Something like that, I would have to imagine is probably not ex, very expensive compared to.
I mean, the problem is, is there's a low point out there, no water can get out of there. No matter, no matter what we do, they've tried to regrade it to do the best that they can. This is what my understanding is. I haven't personally seen it, but just looking at the grades, when we surveyed it, there's a, a low point there that we extend these catch basins up to to help alleviate the drainage. Right now, I mean, I think they've done everything they can with gravel to try and get the water out of there and it's just so flat and it just sits there. So, um, to think we could pull that gravel off and put in new, we're not gonna be getting anywhere. It's still gonna be flat, we're still gonna have that low point. Unless we can get some improvements in there, it's not gonna change a heck of a lot.
So.
A reconstruction of it would be just kind of perpetuating the same type of thing that's been happening. Improving it would be adding storm sewer, potentially adding vituinous. To that point on that storm sewer, putting in catch basins and gravel, it can be done. It does get dirty in those structures, gravel will go into there. It does happen. Um, it would just have to be cleaned from time to time, but catch basins can be added to a gravel alley. They certainly exist in other areas, whether they exist here, I've certainly seen them all over. Gravel does get in there. As you're grading the alley, you'll get some in there and it'll just have to be periodically cleaned out. But that is, it's, it's not a, a landish request to just adding those to gravel alley.
Do you have an idea what that would cause versus?
You have to give me a little bit of time on that. A minute or two?
Well, I think I've said this a number of times, I can't vote, but I can certainly express my opinion and I think if we don't go in there and take care of that drainage problem, whatever the surface is after we're done, I guess we'd have to live with, but if we don't create some way to get that water out of there, I think it would be, I personally think it would be a wrong decision, but you're the people that, that vote on it, so.
So, and if seventy-five percent of the property owners on that block decide that they don't want the improvement done, the upgrade done, then it's not done as well, correct? Is that part of our policy?
I'm not sure.
But the church on seventy-five percent.
Over seventy-five percent, correct?
Ballpark on the storm sewer, around ten, twelve thousand dollars, something like that. I can get exact numbers, but it was, that's.
That would be leaving a gravel.
That would be leaving a gravel.
So over half, over less than half?
Twenty-one hundred, we still need to put some gravel back in where that was to restore that, so let's say fifteen. I'd have to kind of look at it a little bit closer, but somewhere in that vicinity.
So less than half the cost.
I don't wanna be rude to interrupt, but I was at a city council, our school board meeting tonight, and they moved and made a motion, seconded and passed by the school board to stop all discussions about the alley and parking lot and everything because the cost of developing that and everything would be about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars plus. There are holding pods put in there and that is too much money for the eight to ten parking spots. Twenty-five?
Yeah.
Well, they said eight to ten.
Okay, thank you. Council, some further discussion?
If we did the gravel, how would that be assessed? Would that be still assessed a hundred percent?
For the project, maybe. Well, we are upgrading though with the storm sewer.
Oh.
So it would be upgrading that way, but it wouldn't be upgrading the surface. So how would that look on our? Can we split?
Under, under the previous policy, we would look at that as the storm sewer would be an improvement, a hundred percent assessed. Gravel work on that alley would be a reconstruction, that would be assessed at twenty-five percent. That would be my interpretation of the original policy.
Yeah, I think getting a drain in there definitely would be the improvement part of it, yep.
Yes. So that would be a hundred percent assessed under the, that policy. And then the gravel work to restore on top of that, redoing that, that would be twenty-five percent, in my, in my opinion.
I would like to see us move and, and look at that option. Um, I think for all parties, I think it would be better. Not ideal by any means, but, um, at least the cost savings to the property owners on that alley to improve that.
I'll second.
Okay, so you move to.
Did you just make a motion?
Oh, I thought she did, I'm sorry.
I thought so.
It's very subtle. She did use the word move in there, so I think maybe it was move in that direction, but. Um, so then your, your motion would be to add the drain.
Correct, add the drainage, add, add the drainage and
Storm sewer drain.
Storm, storm sewer and leave the, um,
Leaving the, leave gravel.
The alley gravel, so it would be, um, storm sewer assessed a hundred percent to the property owners and the reconstruction of the gravel, at twenty-five percent as written in our assessment, uh, as written in our policy.
Okay.
And bring back the numbers for that, I guess, is probably the next step, right?
Correct.
Is what I'd like to see.
So we would, yeah, we would bring, send out notices to the affected property owners and hold a public hearing for just them alone.
Okay, does everyone understand the motion now? Are we gonna have any further discussion? Yes, we are, right now. Okay. Yeah. Go ahead. You know, I, I really feel I'm caught between a rock and a hard spot or the dog and the fire hydrant, however you wanna. Wherever you wanna be. In a, in a previous lifetime, when I was living in Sherwood, we had a road superintendent by name of Jerome Stewart. Very wise man, kinda came up through, uh, through the ranks. And I remember one time we went to look at a, at a project where water was running down a road and it went down a private citizen's driveway. Well, the fix would be to put a little berm, blacktop berm, right on the edge of the driveway, but it's kind of private property. And Jerome just said, you know, once in a while, you just have to help people out. And he was the same guy that if someone had a flooded basement, he would bring a pump over to help pump it out. I kind of feel with this alley, it's expensive. The property owners can't probably afford the four thousand dollars. The church, Larry and I have gone round and round with that. Who has more money, the Catholics or the Methodist? Who do you think is the Methodist? But what do I know? What you love, remember? So, in my view, this is one of those times when I think we all have to kind of chip in and help out the project a little bit. Yes, it's gonna go on your tax rolls and my tax rolls, but, and everybody's, everybody that's a resident of the city. But again, I think that comes into helping our neighbors out when the time comes, when it's needed. So that's what I have to say on that.
So how do we deal with other people that have alleys that have issues?
Well, I think it's on a
Because now everybody's gonna wanna pay the alley.
First come, first served basis until all the money's gone. No, I, I, you know, I think, I know, I know, you open a Pandora's box.
Yeah, you can open the box, so.
Well, I think one thing we need to keep in mind is looking at how the exception is worded. And that is, in the sole discretion of the city council, upon a finding that the alleyway primarily benefits the general public and not adjoining powder, property owners, the cost of either reconstruction or an upgrading of the alleyway should be assessed twenty-five percent to all lots abutting the alley. So I, I think the council has some discretion there to identify if a particular project meets that criteria or not. So I, personally, I don't think you're opening a can of worms. I can't think of another, there could be another alleyway in Arlington that meets that criteria, but. You know, it doesn't necessarily have to be an alleyway where there's an issue. But I just, I, you know, I agree. I mean, it's up to the discretion of us and, and, um, I think this is one of those times, and I, and I agree with the mayor, I don't think we do something like this, I don't think the council chambers are gonna be full of people looking for alleyway upgrades, alleyway upgrades. Could be wrong.
Well, if the gravel does the trick with the improvements of the sanitary sewer, I mean, if that's gonna be sufficient to take out the, the excess water that's standing.
The storm sewer, storm sewer.
The storm sewer, yeah, that, that's there. That also fixes it at a lower cost, right?
If it works, yes.
If it works. Does it work typically, gravel with the storm sewer?
Depends on how good the, the lead guy is to maintain the alley. I mean, yeah, it's, uh, because it's ever gonna be changing, you know, it's not gonna be set grade, they're gonna regrade the alley. You know, it's really flat out there, so I'm saying it's not been working on that. But any guarantees on it, it really comes down to how well they can grade it out to get water to that. At least do it, have a way to get out in the majority of that area, since you've seen the water sit there, so it would be an improvement. Whether or not it's the ultimate fix, I can't say that.
So here's another question for you. If we, um, reconstructed it with gravel, put the storm sewer in there as the improvement and found in a year or two that it just was not working, is the cost to add the vituinous about the same amount? It's gonna go up a little bit and a little bit, but for the most part, the base is there.
You'd have to excavate out to be able to put that vituinous in there. I mean, yeah, I mean, those are all things that could be done in the future, absolutely. With those catch basins that are already there and then just working, putting that in, it's already designed. Catch basins would be put in, just having gravel brought up and you take that down, putting your vituinous and making sure that it's shaped accordingly.
Are the church's hands tied as far as getting the water out? I mean, they're in the middle and the water's coming to them.
A lot of that water, if you look at the lot then, at the church's parking lot, you look at the slope of that lot and you'll see where a lot of the water's coming from.
Just from.
It runs right down to that corner. If you look at, when I was sitting there and watching traffic and I was looking at that lot, you can just kind of see how that goes right down to that alley. So I think that the majority of the, I can't say the percentage, could I safely say sixty, seventy percent of the water for, that hits that parking lot, runs down to that alley, which part, I think I could say that. I couldn't say a hundred, but I think I could say sixty, seventy percent. Cause you can see the slope from the parking lot all the way down. It's definitely probably the low spot in the parking lot.
Jason, if we go ahead with this, so this delay the project any, being we have to have another public hearing?
No, this is, right now it's in the project. I would do a change order to remove it. The contractor is aware of it. As we get close to installing the storm sewer in that vicinity, I would wanna have some resolution before that point, but we're still weeks away from that.
Jason, you mentioned that if you maintain the gravel, but also put a drain in, there'd be some clean out needed. What does that involve? I mean, that city staff, but what does it involve?
Back truck.
A vac truck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Vacuum that material out of there.
Okay.
Yeah. Eventually flushing that down to the next manhole, catching all the gravel and pulling it out, if you put a back truck or.
Okay.
Really, wouldn't recommend it, first of all, in their, in their hands and removing it, but that's how it's typically removed.
Okay. All right, we do have a motion here and I'm gonna ask for discussion, any further discussion? And the motion again is to go in the area of bringing in a drain, but maintaining the gravel alley. Okay? Ready to vote? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? No. Motion carries four to one. All right, uh, item number twelve, Fire Chief Saski.
Uh, no, sorry, we have one more resolution.
We do.
So, resolution forty.
I'm sorry.
Resolution forty-five dash twenty seventeen is approving the final assessment with the amendment.
Can we do that with the changes that were just made or not?
Correct, so you'd be approving the assessment with the amendment as discussed in the prior resolution.
Which we don't have numbers for yet. Right?
I think we approved it, what I'm gonna recommend is we approve the assessment role minus all alley improvements. Remove that from this assessment role and then address that separately at that separate hearing. So
Okay.
Approve in the assessment role minus the alley improvements is, is what I would recommend. Does that make sense, Liza? That's what we're trying to talk about?
Yes.
Yeah.
And on this assessment role, that has the seven-ten road and not the nine-ten road, is that correct?
Yeah, that's not assessed, so that's just being pulled out. It's already a hundred percent city cost, I will remove that.
Okay, so they weren't assessed, they weren't assessed for that?
They were not.
Okay.
So that's not changing anybody's assessment by pulling that out.
Okay, so then we have resolution forty-five dash twenty seventeen, that would, um, approve the assessments without the alley improvements.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution forty-five twenty seventeen, approve the assessment.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, we, we'll have a voice vote, um, a roll call vote, I should say. And that would be the alley without the, or without the alley improvements, the resolution without the alley improvements and then we're.
And a seven-ten road.
Seven-ten.
Yeah, all that was, yeah.
Any further questions, discussion? If not, roll call vote? Or don't we need a roll call vote? Yes, we do. Do we? Roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have it in front of me here, so. Uh, council member Batchery?
Yes.
Council member Hattleston?
Yes.
Council member Yashewski?
Yes.
Council member Cowell?
Yes.
Council member Island?
Yes.
Okay. Carried unanimously. Now we'll move on to Fire Chief Saski.
Sorry for the false alarm.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason.
Okay, up on there, it says twenty seventeen. I'm actually here for a twenty eighteen brush rig. Back in March, I, I asked to change it to a twenty eighteen. Twenty eighteen went up one hundred dollars from a twenty seventeen. So we're saving the cost of, uh, painting the truck. The total cost of the truck actually with the one hundred dollar increase went up eight hundred and sixty dollars as we've added, uh, options to the truck that we'd have to have vendors put on, such as backup alarms, uh, thirty amp, uh, switches on the dash, stuff like that. So our vendor prices will come down because we actually put it on the truck, which will become part of the three-year, thirty-six thousand mile warranty. So I'm looking for a motion so we can, uh, sign the paperwork and, uh, get this thing ordered. The total cost of the truck will be thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars. Plus the graphics that we'll have to put on it, the bumper, the lights, the siren. But we'll still be well under the forty-five thousand that I asked for in March.
But the vehicle will be purchased in two thousand seventeen, correct?
Uh, actually, if I could have the mayor or you sign the paperwork tomorrow, it will be ordered. It's just waiting for somebody to sign the paperwork.
To receive the vehicle in two thousand seventeen?
Yes, probably July, August, somewhere in there. Just in time for the grass season.
You tell me we're gonna spend a hundred bucks, but we're gonna save considerably more.
Well, it was gonna cost between sixty-five hundred and seventy-five hundred. Well, it was gonna cost between sixty-five hundred and seventy-five hundred dollars to paint the truck. So by waiting to get it eighteen versus a seventeen, we've saved well over six thousand dollars. And we'll get the truck at the same time, because by the time the truck would've came, we'd have to strip it down and paint it, so...
So, so do we have a resolution forty-six twenty seventeen?
No, just a, just a motion.
I think it's just a motion.
Can I make a motion that we, uh, we approve the purchase of the two thousand eighteen brush rig for...
Thirty-one, seven, forty-one.
That would be it.
Thirty-one, seven, forty-one.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any more discussion?
That's just for the purchase of the truck, that's not for the extra stuff that he's gonna put on? That, do we have to approve that as well?
I think we already approved it.
Do you know what the dollar...
Well, we, we had, back in March, we said not to exceed forty-five thousand. I think we probably got, what, two thousand dollars in donations already. Tonight, we just had another three hundred dollar donation towards the truck. So that number should, should continue to come down.
So we're well...
So instead of saying the thirty-one, seven, forty-one, can we just say not to exceed forty-five thousand?
Not to exceed forty-five, we're still at that.
And I know they'll come in under...
Well, thirty-one thousand, that would be just for the truck.
Right, and there are some other, there are some other items.
Plus the other items.
Yeah.
Graphics, bumper, lights.
So to stay under forty-five, can I amend this amendment, uh, motion or add it?
That's fine, yeah.
Amend it to forty-five, not to exceed forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand, okay.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried.
And then just for clarification, according to our purchase policy, it is under stated contract, correct, at this pricing?
Yes. And who is authorized to sign the paperwork at browse?
The mayor or myself?
Could I ask one of you to stop there tomorrow? Everything's, all we need is a signature to get it ordered.
I can stop in. I'll stop in.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, item thirteen, approve or deny rental rate increase for the senior citizens building for Seasons Park?
Uh, the senior building will be substantially completed by Memorial Weekend, so her residents obviously are very excited to get back into that building. Rate increase has not been, a rental rate increase has not been done for over fifteen years, which is currently at seventy-five dollars with a two hundred and fifty dollar deposit. So after polling the parks committee and speaking with a representative from the Lions, the majority did feel that a rate increase was justifiable at one hundred and twenty-five dollars. I'm just seeking formal action to authorize the increase.
I'll move that we raise the fee to use the senior city, senior citizen building by fifty dollars to one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Haddelstead, to increase the rental rate of the senior citizens building at Four Seasons Park to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per event. Is there further discussion?
We have current reservations, correct?
We do.
And those would be under seventy-five or one twenty?
They would still be the seventy-five grandfathered in. So this would be applicable to any new reservations after this date.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. Move on to miscellaneous business. Chief Padilla, would you like to share some of your wisdom with the...
Yes, sir.
...council? Thank you. Thanks for attending tonight.
Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, guests, my name is Tony Padilla, Durham Police Chief, and I'm here just to cover the month of April, what's been going on. Next slide, please.
Sorry.
Had to make a PowerPoint to catch up to speed with you guys here. As general, we're gonna talk about tonight calls for service, trends, incidents, hours, and personnel. Next slide, please. This is our calls for service for the month of April, uh, two thousand seventeen. And we've been doing a lot of park checks. My understanding is there are some issues at the parks, so we're, we're trying to, to go down there and, and show that we're around and, and we, I think we got a report of some broken glass in, uh, Four Seasons, but that's, that's about the only problems that we've had, um, at the parks. Those are just general breakdown of, uh, what we've been doing, a lot of business checks. We try to get out, get very active in our community, and so we've been going to your businesses as well. Traffic stops, apartment checks, it's something that we, uh, do a lot of in our city. Since we've been doing apartment checks here, um, we have cited some people for smoking marijuana inside the apartment building, um, so...
Could you tell me what, uh, an apartment check is?
Yeah, what, basically what it amounts to is the, the officer will get out of the car and walk through the building to see if anything's going on, any kind of issues.
Is that a building with multiple units in, or is it, is single family?
Well, what we, what we concentrate on is apartment buildings and just doing a walkthrough. Um, I don't know if, I guess if you're kinda referring to like a house check. We do house checks for people when they go out of town. They can sign up, and then we'll go out to their house and walk around it, make sure their windows are secure.
I just wasn't sure what the apartment check was. Just walk down the hallway and see that...
You know, we, well, actually, there's, we've, we've also, uh, walked up into domestic apartments here as well as, um, some marijuana, so, you know, sometimes, um, the apartments can be kinda lightning rods. For, for some people that live there, there could be potential issues. And alls we're trying to do is just make it so that everybody that's there can have a safe, you know, comfortable place to reside and not have to worry about what's going on in the apartment next to them. So, that's the intent.
Have you had much trouble with interracial fighting? You know, gang type things or...
No, I, I, we haven't seen a lot of that. Uh, we did get called to, uh, Frenzel Park, last Friday during the day about noon, and we got a report that there's eight to ten people fighting. And by the time we got there, what it was is some high school kids that were playing tag for their lunch break. So they were using the park. They said they go to that park because the other parks have small kids at them, and that was the only one that didn't have small kids, so they're trying to stay away from the kids. But as far as interracial or, or gang, uh, activity, we, we haven't ran into anything like that.
Thank you.
Now, uh, next slide, please.
Oh.
Phew.
Sorry, I know.
Yeah, it'd be fast.
Blame the user. Sorry.
No, no problem. Uh, when I got here, I asked what were the specific issues that, uh, you know, you wanted the police department to focus on, and, uh, community relations was, was one of them, so we've been working hard at getting out, being visible and talking with, with business owners. Uh, another thing was the parks, it was identified that, uh, there were some issues going on at the parks. There was, uh, hospital checks at nighttime with, with, uh, workers getting off shift, and there were some issues in the past. And then the, the Quick Stop gas station, there was some issues at, uh, closing that they wanted officers there. So we've been engaged in that. There's been a couple other things, uh, traffic areas that have been identified as, uh, uh, having a lot of speeders going down them, so, we've had officers posted in those different areas, trying to, uh, look for that kind of activity as well. So, um, one of the things that, uh, we're, we have been spending some time on lately is, actually, there's just another one came in today. We've, uh, had eight bad checks that have been issued at, uh, one business in town. Uh, they take checks, uh, or cash, because I guess they don't like paying the four percent fee that they're charged on a Visa card. In, in the past, the county used to have a check diversion program that these business owners could send their checks to them, and they would handle this kind of issue. Well, that check diversion program has gone away in the county, so now every one of these checks that gets written, um, becomes an investigation by the police department. So that, that can be time consuming. So, you know, we're trying to work with the businesses to, uh, to look at other options. You know, you understand too that they, they have a business to run and, and, uh, they have to support their, their customers, so just trying to find some medium ground so we can, you know, cut back on some of these bad checks. Next slide, please. This is just a breakdown, actually, the, the next couple. This is just a breakdown, uh, Vicki goes and she, she types up each one of them, and so you guys can kinda see specifically what was happening by date. So, sorry about the small writing. It was cutting and pasting it in the PowerPoint here. So next slide, please. Everybody's been kind of asking, uh, how many hours of contract time was Gaylord provided to Arlington? From March twenty-ninth, when we started the original contract, to April thirtieth, we have about a hundred and sixty-four and a half hours. And that's, that's time between the officers and myself that is, uh, that has actually been spent in the city of Arlington. So, uh, next slide, please. And this is, this is our department, these are the, the officers that are, that are coming through town. We, uh, we just added another one, um, Officer Kevin Fisher, but, uh, and you can't really see the dog very well, but I bet everybody's there. So with that being said, uh, subject to any questions that the council may have?
I guess one item that I dealt with yesterday, somebody called and they said they, uh, had a dog barking in the house near them all day long. And, uh, when they would call the, you know, the, uh, police number, of course, they would get a recording or that. And they, and they understood that, yeah, they could've called the sheriff, but they said it's not an emergency, it's just annoying. Well, as this person was on the phone, I, I told them, I said I had just seen the, uh, patrol officer in Arlington, and she said, oh, there he goes down the street. So, she went out and flagged him down, and I think got the, uh, got some resolution to her concern, but... The person was very nice about it, but yet I wish somehow that if the patrol officer is in town, that they could grab messages off the, off the phone, but I guess that doesn't work, huh?
Uh, well, this weekend, um, actually, last night, um, Jordan was scheduled to work and he took off, so usually, when he comes in during, during his weekends, he usually takes those messages and will respond. That's something I can tell the officers, what we've been doing is going inside the office there, and there's kind of a window ledge off to the side. And, uh, anything that, that's for the officers to handle, we'll just pull it from there, we haven't been...
But as far as their ability to get a call, to get a call, phone message, they really don't have that ability?
Well, they, they do have the ability, they just have to check the answering machine.
Oh, okay.
You know, one thing that, uh, we, we, we've been having a struggle trying to find like a happy medium right now, because what happens, and this happens in, in, in our city as well, residents are used to calling the, the police department phone number, and that's what they like to do. They wanna call their police department and not the sheriff's office, and, and so what's been happening is the messages have been going to Vicki, and then, uh, then Vicki will call the, the, the Gaylord Police Department. And, and sometimes our officer's been out on other calls, so it's taken a little longer. So what we've been trying to tell Vicki, um, at this point, is to forward those calls to the sheriff's office dispatch, and then they can, they can let us know that, what the call is that's pending, and then kind of get it addressed out that way. And it's really hard change for, 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 for these towns, it's, it's extremely difficult in Gaylord too. If we're not in the office, uh, people will leave emergency messages on our, on our answering machine. So we get it, people want their, their police department, and we're just gonna have to figure out a way to get better at checking the messages, so... I'll push that information out to the officers to check.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you. Is there any protocol that you use for like missing dogs or pets?
Yeah, uh, unfortunately, we, we seem to pick up a lot of dogs. What we do is we, we post a picture of the dog, like if we find a dog or a missing dog, we try to put it on Facebook. You wouldn't believe, like, we, we all have ten thousand people that will look at a dog, right? Uh, you'll find out, you know, s- uh, some other event that, uh, they'll, they'll get, you know, two hundred people that'll look at it, but for animals, people love animals, and so, that's, that's been our best system to get that information out about pets, is just through Facebook, and a lot of people will share it and, and get it out that way.
Is there a place where they're held then, the, the animals?
Yeah, and it, that's really becoming extremely difficult. What we do for, for, for Gaylord is we have a small kennel, um, behind the police department, and, uh, we'll, we'll post it on Facebook, we'll put the dog inside that kennel, and then we'll, we'll wait a few hours, as, as many as we can, to see if somebody claims that dog. And then, uh, if nobody claims it, we have two options. We can take it to Fairfax if it's, if it, we think somebody's gonna claim it, like it's got a little collar on it, you know, it's all groomed nicely, uh, we'll take it to Fairfax. And then if, uh, if, if it's looking a little rough and doesn't have a collar on it, uh, we usually take them to New Ulm, to the Humane Society. And those are, are only two options right now. There's, there's, uh, pet services that will take care of it, but they want you to sign contracts, and they're usually pretty substantial amount of money, they want, you know, a few hundred dollars a month to be in a, a relationship that, you know, they'll take, they'll take your dogs for you, so... That's, that's just how we've been dealing with it.
The pet office, the town here doesn't take dogs anymore, I'm assuming, then?
No, yeah.
You know, they used to.
They used to, yeah. When I used to work here before, part-time, that's, everybody in the county was bringing dogs over there, but he doesn't, they don't do it anymore, so...
Well, I know, there's a lot of pet owners that either, you know, they're, the, the strays are attracted to them or... And, and they're, and they have a concern over these, you know, missing or lost animals, so, I guess I was just curious at what Gaylord did, because I know that we really don't have anything in place right now.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's a long time to, it's a long time to, uh, be gone from the city as well, when you're taking a dog down to New Ulm, you know, you're gonna be gone a couple hours doing that, and, you know, then it becomes an issue of, uh, you know, assessing some sort of a surcharge or a fee, um, to the person whose dog it is, so that, you know, you're recouping some of your miles and your, uh, your officer's time from being gone from the city. Is there any other questions, concerns, comments?
Any other questions, folks? I guess not.
Thank you very much.
I just did, whoop, I'm sorry. Yeah. Hundred and sixty-four hours, that was for the month of April.
Yeah, March twenty-ninth through April, yep.
How's about, divide that by eight, that'd be twenty days. That's sound about right?
Well, there, there, there's definitely more, 'cause so, so for example, when Jordan's back working nights now, so we come over here during the day as well, still. So, I mean, there's, there's not a day that we usually don't touch foot in, in Arlington. So that's all, that's what, thirty, thirty-two days?
Yeah, I know you're not here twenty days out of the month, it's split hours and all that, and it's...
Right, right. Based off staffing and then the, the plan with Arlington, kinda, or, uh, I'm sorry, with, uh, the county, the, the way we've been trying to do it, but, uh, it hasn't, uh, no system is perfect, so you have to bear with us. But what's been happening is during the day, uh, Gaylord's taking all the calls in Arlington. And then at nighttime, if there's a, if there's an officer in Arlington, then the, the Gaylord officer stays in town. If there's a deputy, uh, or if there's an Arlington officer on, the county won't come into town. If there's not an officer on at nighttime, then our officer, the Gaylord officer, will come and patrol. Usually on average, two, uh, two and a half hours a night, uh, they'll patrol. And then the same with the sheriff's office, they'll come over here. And now the way it's been working at nighttime as of late is that all the calls in Arlington, whether it's day or night, have been getting sent to the, to the Gaylord officers, so...
Is there always someone in town at night when the bars close, when the bar closes?
No, um, that wasn't, uh, I mean, if that is an issue, that, uh, it's some, something that you guys are looking at, you can let me know, but, uh, usually right around midnight is the, the officers generally are leaving because they've, uh, completed that hospital, employee walkout, so... You know, you're looking at two, two-thirty in the morning, uh, with the bars closing, dug hole.
Okay.
Very, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
All right, council, council committee updates. Anyone?
Yeah, the police one, if I can come up. We had the meeting with Centennial Lakes with Mayor Bartholomew and Chief Cohen in Gaylord in regards to the joint powers agreement. Um, they talked about the pros and the cons, and they said one of the biggest pros was is each community, uh, seated at the table, offers better hiring opportunities for the staff, and with a larger sized staff would offer the staff better opportunities to advance. Another thing that was discussed is a lot of times with these joint powers agreements, that they like to see as much as possible that the ordinance, so to speak, kind of mirror each other, so the officers aren't in one town with one set of rules, in another town with another set of rules. Said it works a lot better that way. And I know with Cent, with the Centennial Lakes, they said that with the amount of money that they save, that if they had a standalone department, it would cost... that if they had a standalone department, it would cost them more money. Uh, they said their operation board is made up of a city admin, uh, that deal with the day-to-day issues. And on the board would be from each town, what they do is, I'm trying to find my notes here. I believe it was their mail and one mayor and one council member that meet quarterly.
And they have three communities, correct?
Three communities, yep. And another thing they stated was that for one of these joint powers agreements to really work, that the communities have to really work together. As far as, don't let any big problems, little problems become big problems, a lot of communication, a lot of trust. And then they have a tendency to work and if the communication isn't there, well, they don't work too well. What did I forget?
One thing that I, I found interesting at the meeting when they were talking was how, um, the, the care of one community, taking care of one community over the, over the other. If one community's having issues, to really focus on them and get those issues taken care of, because they're a reflection of each other. If, if they control that, it doesn't seep over and get into your other community as much. Um, and then, and, and I, I, that, I kinda took to that a little bit. The other, the other point that, um, I'd like to make on that is, um, all the communities were getting about the same amount of policing as one another, whether they be a small town or whether they be the bigger town. I mean, they're all small towns, but whether it be the really small town or the big town, the town that has nothing going on, no bars, no nothing, and versus the bar, the town with three bars, they were all pretty much getting the same level of policing, community policing and such, so.
I think if I'm not mistaken, those three communities do adjoin each other.
Yeah, correct.
So, I mean, that, as far as...
Do adjoin each other, right?
Is one separate, one is a little bit separated.
Yeah, it was up there, but she has...
Yeah, they wouldn't have the communicate, or the travel.
No.
Like, like potentially Arlington-Gaylord.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Um, we had an EDA meeting, um, uh, the first, last Monday, I believe. Um, we went over our financial reports. Um, we had an update on the TSC building, that some, uh, businesses has been looking at it. They're just trying to get their ducks in a row to see if they would move forward with that, um, or not. And that's to come in the next couple of months. Uh, we also talked about, uh, the former Seneca building. And, uh, that purchase is done, right?
Mm-hmm, it's completed, yep.
So now we're looking at, um, he's looking at his own contracts as far as other businesses. He's gonna be leasing or, or selling portions of Seneca off to different businesses. Um, so I, I think that's yet to come, some of the businesses coming and talking maybe to the, to the planning and zoning or something maybe, uh, as far as, uh, COPs or something. See if we have enough water on hand or water treatment facilities for them. Um, and also talk...
You said water park?
Water park! I think the company that's looking to move in is, uses a lot of water. So to see if our, our facilities have enough. Sorry Jim, I didn't mean to get you excited over there, over a water park.
I didn't, I didn't know that, I just heard water.
Water, right, yeah, water park. Um, another thing that we ta, uh, we were updated on is, um, a housing study, um, from the, uh, county level. So, there's not a lot of action, just a lot of info, and it was a very, very short one. We got in and out record time, I believe. We also talked about our goals, uh, touched on our goals, uh, and they're progressing, moving along, so.
Okay, anything else? Wanna hear about my street committee meeting?
Sure.
All right. It was almost a marathon, I know it all.
Heard it was long.
One of the longest ones we've had.
It is. Um, John Peterson from ID Sign Solutions introduced his service. Um, what he does is put up street signs, stop signs, um, kinda goes around the city, makes an assessment. I think he's gonna come up with some kind of a estimate for...
In, the city purchased a bunch of signs last year, they have yet to be installed. We also have, um, two specific signs that need to be installed. One that was recently hit and another one that's just been placed as a temporary stop sign out at the corner of, uh, Alden and... The first.
First, second, third.
Kirby didn't, we didn't have to excuse...
The juries. So anyhow, that was pretty interesting. He does a lot of work for the counties and townships and what have you and all over the state. So hopefully he'll have some good answers for us. Um, it's kind of our first meeting with, with Kirby. And, uh, had a chance to chat with him a little bit and answer some of his questions and answer some of our questions. Um, we also discussed the drainage issue on Chestnut Drive and Mary Lane. And I think the water kinda runs off the street. And where the street ends, there's a road, a field approach to the farmland to the north.
Is that right old here, the development, depending where you are, okay.
And with the wet year last year, it created a issue, kind of a ponding, and then when the farmer went in and out of the field, it turned into ruts and the landowner hauled some gravel in to kinda help the situation. So the long and short of it, Jason Vellwright had some history of the development, going back to the middle seventies. And some of the issues that were brought up at that time. And, um, I think the long and short of it is, we're gonna try and meet with the original development, developers and the adjacent property owners to see if there's some kind of a solution that can be had. We discussed the truck route on Alden with the street utility improvements. I think that was pretty well taken care of tonight. Um, we also had a long, oh, very difficult discussion about John Paulman's request for the twenty mile an hour speed limit sign. And we spent hours on that, I mean, it just went round and round and round. But, um, and he's not listening to a thing I'm saying, is he?
No.
And I believe, um, council member Hattlested had talked to John and, um, decided that we'll kinda wait to see, once the construction is done, and what the traffic flow is like at that time. And for a few months of next year, is that what...
Well, I just, I, I just explained to John that because we don't know what's going to happen with the loading and the school's not a hundred percent sure, that we would wait until school gets going. And if there looks like there's an issue, we would address that. And I think I told you, John, we would not forget about you, correct?
No, you did.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
So...
I did find out if you think tonight, uh, going to the school meeting.
John, you wanna use a microphone? Come on up, then we can all hear you better. Yeah, especially me.
The fact that they're not going to be, uh, using the Methodist church that they ended all discussion with them. They said they were going to, um, put some more emphasis in using St. Paul Lutheran, uh, church lot. Probably put some black topping in there and, you know, whatever. And it would be closer actually to the front entrance of the school.
We're not gonna black top that, only you're using a lot, it's the gravel. Only talk about using lots of the gravel.
You didn't, you wouldn't hear what they said, did you? Well, he's the one that talked about it, didn't he? We talked about black copying.
Okay, well, that's their decision.
But that's their decision, yeah.
Yeah, that's...
They're gonna negotiate with the church council, possibly do some black topping and do some improving to it, yeah. And, um, so that's, I, I think was a plus, you know. But, uh, I still, and they really weren't aware of the fact. As, as I said, I don't want a school bus route by my house. A bus route. I don't care if you, if the kids come or the, any, anybody else. They can use my street and all the other streets that were designated for that purpose. But there is not room for the buses to go up and down that street. When there's cars parked on both sides, after that street was narrowed, there, there wouldn't be room there if the road would have been left. I mean, it would be a traffic hazard. And, um, they still haven't decided where they want the entrance, which I don't understand. And, and what they wanted to do is put the entrance right at the end of Chandler. And my proposal to them was to use the original entrance on the south corner of the school and make that a bus entrance only. All the way past the front of the school to the north side. And then they could unload, you know, and pick up. And this would actually be, also act as a bus parking lot. When you have things going on at school, like ballgames and so forth, the buses that bring the spectators, the players and so forth, a lot of times, uh, don't have a place to park their bus close to the school. They have to park out in the street somewhere and wait for the game to get over or whatever. Where this way, they could use the same, uh, street or entrance and park their buses there during the activities going on. And so...
John, I'm gonna have to cut you off pretty soon. We have five minutes and you're over that, so...
I want a road, a street, a bus entrance on the west side, all the way through, that's what I want.
All right. Those are, those are things you need to take up with the, uh, school district, not with us.
No.
So...
You are the people that designate...
Okay, John, you and, you and, uh, council member Hattlested did have an agreement, I think, that we'd wait and see what, what happens when this is done.
That's gonna be too late. Because if they develop, if they don't develop that street now, what's gonna happen is they're, they'll probably put a shrubber or patio out there for all you, what you know.
Well, you know, John, that, that, um, is all on private property, what you're talking about on the west side of the school. That, that's not, that's not our land, it's all their property, the school's property.
Yeah, their property.
So, yeah, I mean, we wouldn't have any say in what they do on their property.
But you'd, you'd have to say where the access is to your property.
Yeah, but, but putting a road in?
Yeah, but I mean...
Between the, uh, Ravinsky's and the school, that we don't have any business with.
That's, there's plenty of room there.
Well, there may be, but it's not our place to dictate what is done in that space. You need to...
But I...
That's up to the school board, I'd have to say, John, yeah.
And they really weren't aware of any of that tonight, that this was a possibility. But they still said they, you know, would have to have some type of permission from the council and so forth.
Well, then we'll let them approach the council for permission. If it, if it gets to the point where that's what they need, we will discuss it then, so...
Well, I, I, we might as well give up. I mean, we're running out of time on this thing. I mean, said, like, they told him, wait till all the construction and everything is done. Once the project is finished, we weren't gonna be doing any changing.
Well, again, John, whatever is going on on that property is not the city's business. It's the school district's business to decide. I'm sorry that we disagreed, we disagreed.
They still have to come up with a public street that is owned by you, you know, and access. I, I can't figure this out. I think that if, if the council would say, hey, you can't establish, uh, entrance where you wanna at the end of my property because so and so, I think then they would maybe go ahead and look at it and maybe work on that situation a little bit.
Well, I think, what was it, when they brought their site plan to us, they had the, the entrances and the exits to the parking lot.
Not, it wasn't, um, it was, yeah, on it.
Yeah, they did.
I got it right here. But not the one they're proposing now. Not the one at the end of my street was not on there.
It was on, um, what is that short little street?
Hmm, Doug, um, probably Douglas or...
No, not on Douglas. Douglas goes east and west, what goes north and south and short little one?
No, Chandler's the longest.
I know, but then it turns...
John, can we take this up at another time? I think we are, we've...
Like I said, we're running out of time.
Well, we've had a two-hour meeting tonight and, uh...
I, I know.
Yep. And I'm only halfway done with my report.
And he's only have to, we've done this report.
And Ben hasn't started his yet.
He doesn't have any.
John, if you have some new items to bring to the council, please request time to speak to the council at a future meeting.
I'll be here next time, I'll be on it again.
At three fifty-five, we discussed truck traffic on Metal Arc Lane at the request of Tim Cooby. And he wanted an update while he was here this evening and expressed his concerns. And I think they're also our concerns. We've talked to some of the business owners there to see about maybe allowing some of their truck traffic. Maybe we have to keep an eye on it and try not to let it get out of hand. I think we talked about putting up some speed, speed limit signs on that one also. In fact, we've pretty much agreed to do that, or decided to do that. Uh, we also talked about healthy trees in the boulevard, requests for removal. Some people had some trees that were ruining their sidewalk and one of those taken down. And then one of the more important things we discussed was the Christmas lights downtown on the building. The white lights that outline the buildings and, um, you know, I don't think we can do anything with it. I think it's, um, um, number one would be very expensive. And number two, to get an electrical company to put the lights up, if they're gonna stay up all year round, um, they didn't wanna do it. They can't do it. It's against... So I think those types of lights are not really cold anymore. Yeah. Then we talked about the, um, garland, might need some replacements there. And, um, the other thing, some parking along Dr. Gusterson's office. With some of the repainting of the yellow lines, they maybe lost the parking spot. So Kirby was gonna re-measure that and see if we could squeeze another parking spot out of that.
I don't think that's possible.
I don't know if we can or not. And then replace the, um, the town parking signs are needed, they're faded and so forth and so on. And then lastly, but not leastly, um, Sibley Serve, Serve Project ideas for Principal Tim Shellhammer for Friday, May twenty-sixth. Well, if we have some projects for some students that you ever come up?
Yeah, Kirby, uh, this morning had thought of the work around the north city sign to match the landscaping that's been done on the south side. So that would be at the city expense versus, this one was funded by the MinDOT grant. And this one, because it sits on private property, would have to be funded through the city.
So the landscaping work, huh?
Is there any work in the parks or anything like that that can be done by Sibley Serve? I mean, that would be free, a bunch of rakes and, and what have you, right? Or...
Any wooden bench, park benches that could be painted?
I know you had somebody painting last year, so I don't know.
Well, and Sibley Serve, right, was, was rained out last year, so it would be nice if, hopefully weather permits, they can get out and, and do some projects. I know they're looking for projects yet though, and volunteers, even adult volunteers.
Do what?
They're even looking for adult volunteers that day to work alongside the students.
I can't work, Dr. Seneca. Can't lift over ten pounds. Okay, I'm up to fifteen pounds this week. So, Tom, did I miss anything?
No, you didn't miss anything, great for all.
Alright.
Please, they're all.
Okay.
Planning and zoning, they met, um, a few weeks ago and discussed the ordinance that you saw tonight. But also discussed a potential rental, um, inspection policy. And they want to schedule a joint work session with this council so that everybody can kinda talk about, uh, the pros and cons of having something in place. So we'll look forward to receiving the scheduling request from planning and zoning consultant Cynthia Smith-Drake.
Okay, any other committee updates, any reports?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Hope we have one more thing. With one more item.
Open discussion, here we go.
So our police committee has been meeting on a regular basis since January to discuss, um, the future of our police policing in Arlington. And one of those discussions was to engage our public in an open forum. So was looking forward to possibly putting something on our schedule for us to schedule, whether it be a police committee hosted event or if it would be a city council hosted event. But they have thrown out a couple, a few dates in, um, the end of June, beginning of July. Thinking what your thoughts were and who would be a good facilitator for that discussion.
When is our contract up with Gaylord?
The end of June.
End of June.
And did I read correctly, they don't wanna meet again until the, until this would happen, or the?
It's up to them when they want to meet again.
Well, right, because, yeah, I mean, to me, if we do this, you know, are we waiting another month? You know, and, you know, I think we kinda all have an idea what's gonna happen at, at this, who's gonna come and what their thoughts are gonna be. So now we're waiting a month and if, you know, the results of it is nobody in the community wants, you know, Gaylord and Arlington combined, you know, are we wasting another month and we could be possibly going with the chief now? Or at least getting the process started.
Well, I think my, my feelings is falling back on, on the mayor's goals is to explore all options. And, and, I mean, honestly, that's what we're trying to do, is just explore it to see if, i- if it would even possi- potentially work even. You know, that alongside with the county and stuff too. I, I don't think anything is, as, as far as I'm concerned, that we shouldn't explore at this point. Right. Um, but yeah, but going along with that, I mean, the, I do wanna hear from the people. And, and maybe, uh, listening to, like, what we've learned so far about this process or what we've been exploring and learning about, if they hear it firsthand. You know, I don't know if that would, you know, um, it would enlighten them. I mean, at least they'd know what's been talking about a little bit more. I know Kurt's been really good with the newspaper, throwing, throwing everything in there, um, and that's been great. I just, I think it's important to hear everybody, I do.
And, and I, I, I would think the public isn't aware of the shortage of people to fill up specific jobs. We're looking for doctors at, at, at the hospital and clinic. There just aren't any doctors to hire. And you, you don't get applications. How many applications have we had for police chief?
Police officer.
Officer. We had a lot, right?
Yeah, a little over thirty.
Oh, well, that's true. That's better than I expected, but-
Right, but a few years ago, we had over two hundred.
I can't remember how many we had, but we did have more. And that is the trend across, I mean, not just our community, it's the trend across the cities that application are down.
Mm-hmm. I think it would be beneficial, and I don't know where this is gonna end up. But I think it would be at a minimum beneficial to have some type of a forum so that we could get whoever shows up, of course, in there and explain to them, as Michelle said, where we're at right now, what we are looking at, what the advantages are, what the disadvantage. A lot of these people don't know any of this.
And why we're doing it.
And, and why it's happening. And, and I, and, and at that point, if, and not only that, but while we're talking to them, they could also give the council, the police committees, whatever, some feedback in regards to, if you were to do this, here are four areas of concern or six that we would like to see addressed. So if we did move forward with this, we'd at least be able to address their concerns. Nobody knows where it's going.
No.
But I think we need to give the citizens a choice to at least be heard.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think just trying to identify what it is that our, our residents want or need in a community police department. So whether that's community policing, whether it's, um, programming, efficiency. I, I think we just want to hear what, what is it that they expect or want out of a community police department.
Did you ever have that meeting last week with the Gaylord Police Committee?
No. Don't get me started.
Yeah, we, that's kind of their subject at this time.
I don't think-
You know, it's the second time they've kind of-
Well, that, that really concerns me, I mean, that-
Jim, concerns me probably as much or more than anybody does. And when that happened, I was ready to just throw in the towel. And, and I don't want to get in an agreement that two months later say it was the biggest mistake we ever made. I don't wanna go there. But I don't know if I'm ready to drop the ball right now either.
Well, you know, I've said this before-
I know where you're coming.
I kinda grew up with the Lake South Police Department in Tonkavishore and Greenwood and Excelsior. And from the time I came to town when it's still Arlington, Green Isle Police Department, I was talking to the chief at the time and I've been talking to them that 'cause Green Isle, Arlington and Gaylord get them in a joint powers, you'd have more people, more officers and so forth. Um, so I've, I've seen how it works and I've seen it work. And it's had its ups and downs. But the way things are going right now, I'm not happy with, 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 with what's happening. I, I just don't have a warm fuzzy feeling, so-
I don't either.
We do have to keep reminding ourselves why we are exploring all options. We have difficulty recruiting and retaining good quality, talented staff in all of our departments. And so this council has tasked itself to explore all options to figure out, okay, what can we do to give, to, in, in order to attract good quality staff? But then how does the layers within each department, how do we provide leadership opportunities and, um, in order to keep them here? We want them to stay here. So that is why we've been exploring all these discussions, because it is expensive to go through turnover. It's, it tests our staff, the timing involved, to, what it takes to go through a hiring process. But then once you get that person hired and then you have to train them and then the calls and the late at night from inexperienced staff who need reassurance that they're doing the right thing. It takes a lot of time and it takes a lot of money. So that is why this council is working so hard to do this. So we have to keep our eye on the ball, on the long-term vision and keep reminding ourselves why we're entering into these discussions and what's best for our community.
No matter how hard it can be at times.
Well, I think the mayor talked about that also, that you're gonna get some stops on the road. And if you wanna make it work, you can, but you gotta try.
Well, and I think you touched on it the best before and it was all about communication. And I mean, it boils down to that, any relationship is about the communication. And I guess, you know, to me, communicating with and, and having that conversation with our, with our community, having the conversation with their community, I mean, and with other communities that have gone through the same thing or that are there. That's the most important thing, communication. I'd like to, how soon can we have it? I, I feel, I feel the same way. I mean, um, months ago, I'm like, well, let's just, you know, put an ad out there for a chief at the same time. And I thought then if this falls through, we'd have something to, you know, have a backup plan or whatever. But after, you know, talking and, and who, who would apply, knowing that there's a potential for not even having that position anymore? If we're in talks type thing or, or looking for other things. Um, I honestly think that we need to do a forum, uh, sooner than a month down the road, as soon as we can to get the word out and, and, um, hope for a good crowd.
So are you looking for dates that would work?
I, I did provide dates, looking at our meeting schedules that we have coming up. Um, and also properly advertising in the paper and all our multiple forms, so we can get a good turnout. We want, we wanna do it right, so.
So would you like council members to get back in touch with you to find, to let you know which dates in their calendars will work out?
Can we come up with a date now so that at least it's out there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be gone the last week of June.
Oh, I would hope that we would get together well, well before that.
Well, I also got the dates here, the-
There's no dates here that are, that are-
Those are the dates that, based on meeting schedule and other events that we've got coming up.
We're booked until then?
Um, there's other, yep, I mean, not everybody could maybe be in attendance at some of these dates, but any dates earlier than that. So I guess if you guys wanna throw something else.
Can I look over your shoulder here?
Absolutely.
And then there's a calendar behind you on the wall.
I can't make that one, I crawl it. I can pick, probably make all but the twentieth, 'cause I don't think I'll be walking then, but unless you wanna pick me up and wheel me over here and ambush my walker.
Well, it's only a couple of blocks. Don't know how comfortable you'll be.
Your opinions.
Um, I just, I just feel like that's a, that's like too far out. I mean, I, I would like to see, I would like to see something earlier in June, I mean-
Okay, I will look at dates and bring them back to the council.
Maybe communicate, maybe realize you can get something locked in quicker than, uh, the next council meeting.
Mm-hmm. And then facilitator, anybody have any ideas or you can get back to me on a, the facilitator for-
Facilitator.
Facilitator for this?
Alright, that's all I have on this, if there's any other items that are open discussion.
Okay, any other items in open discussion? If none, motions ordered to adjourn.
Make a motion.
I'll say. Third. Oh, I thought-
Motion by council member Betcher, second by council member Highland to adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If there was no, meeting's adjourned, yeah. Eight fifty-three.